I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you please, rise. We'll take fudge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting off.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Rinn.
Yes, thank you. And I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. You all look wonderful. We have a nice group this evening. So, thank you so much for coming. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. February meeting. Thank you, Ms. Regola-Dye. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Were there any corrections? Okay, ready, done. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Regola-Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Rinn.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. And there are no commendations in communication and public participation. We now get up. We're looking forward to this, so.
We are too. We are too. You want to pull that in for me? Thank you. All right, it's an honor and a privilege, as always, to be in front of you. And I would like to say, we have some very special guests with us this evening. Some of our fifth graders. I've got Bristol here. I've got Keaton. And I've got Gabby as well. And we're going to be sharing a little bit about our service learning project that we're completing in fifth grade. We also have Mrs. Humphrey, our fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Rice, and Mrs. Sims in attendance as well. And they've been working really hard with our fifth graders on this service learning project. All right, thanks, thank you. So, project-based learning really is identifying a problem. And what we had discussed as a group is, what makes Mount Vernon so special? And we kept coming back to the people. It's the people in Mount Vernon that make it so special in their giving nature. So, the students had identified that they want to develop a project to give back to the community. So, we also are providing student voice and choice. This was not a project that was created by the teachers, but rather, the students identified areas in the community, which you'll hear about in a moment, that really meant something to them. Then, we are actually in May, our students are going to be completing the service learning project out in the community, which you'll hear more about too in just a moment. So, really, project-based learning is identifying a problem that's meaningful to you, having that authentic voice and choice in it. But we've also been tasked by Mr. Cedar to really bump up our learning. Okay? You probably heard that quite a bit, bump it up. And really, looking at Daggett's model of instruction, the authentic part is really what bumps it up. Taking that content knowledge and applying it to a real-world scenario. So, we also discussed kind of this portrait of a graduate. What is it that our employers are wanting from our students when they graduate? They're really looking for individuals that are able to communicate, to think creatively and critically, to be able to collaborate with their peers, to build character and have that content knowledge. And we feel that this service learning project really envelops all of these areas. So, I've got some questions here, because nobody really wants to hear from me anyway. They want to hear from the kiddos. So, I'm going to ask some questions, if you guys don't mind. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. Keaton, if you don't mind, would you tell us a little bit about some of the projects fifth-grade groups have identified in order to support our community?
Well, we have identified four major areas that we need to work on. So, one is pet shelters, providing what they need, as in food and supplies. And parks, cleaning them up, making it a safe environment. One group identified skate parks, cleaning up graffiti, maybe fixing some equipment. And nursing homes, doing activities with them, doing arts and crafts, meeting with them, just listening to them, mainly making their day brighter. And my group in particular is doing a food drive just in the parking lot of Twin Oak. So, we'll have a structure that can hold non-perishable foods so that people can come by, get the foods they need to have a meal.
Thank you. So, if you don't mind, thank you, Keaton. So, Bristol, if you don't mind, could you maybe share with us the process that you guys used to come up with these ideas?
So, first, we were writing on a posting note what we were good at or talented at.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
And then, we wrote down also what were issues, what issues did we care about in our community and what does our community need?
Now, with this, Bristol, if you don't mind, I see a lot of ideas up here. Were you guys able to select all of them to complete?
No, we found common issues that we thought that our community needed to work on. And we combined them together, kind of, and we made three groups in each class.
Excellent. Thank you. And here are some other examples as well that the students had identified. And can you tell us who this is?
This is Ms. Howley. She was, Ms. Humphrey and Ms. Howley were brainstorming with some kids.
And you know who Ms. Howley works for?
Uh, no, I forgot.
Okay, she's with the United Way. So, we have partnered with the United Way here. And Ms. Krajewski here really has served as kind of the intermediary between some of our community partners and the school. And we'll skip that. These are some other ideas that the students had identified as well. And there's Ms. Krajewski. She actually came into each one of our fifth-grade classes and worked on this brainstorming with the students of ideas. And the video that I wanted to share, that we're having some technical difficulty with, actually showed Ms. Krajewski and Mrs. Humphrey working with a group of students. The students had been learning about microplastics. And they had identified maybe utilizing some of the old Kroger bags or Meyer bags and tying them together, actually knitting them, to create a vapor barrier for our homeless population. So, that way, they had something between them and the ground as well. So, those were some of the conversations that were taking place. And here are some more examples as well. And so, we identified the areas in which we wanted to support our community. We talked about the process in which we went through. Gabby, what was the next step?
The next step was to identify the individuals in charge of the area of the community we were focusing on. And we were practicing writing professional emails. And once they were developed, we sent them out, asking what they needed and hoping for response.
Absolutely. So, really, with this project too, we're taking some of the content areas and we're really integrating it into the project. We aren't utilizing time outside of, we're not polling students during reading or writing or math or science. We're looking at our STEM time. And that's really the time that we're bringing in and integrating all of these different content areas. Thank you, Gabby. All right, Keaton. So, we've identified the areas. We've talked about the process. We've talked about the professional emails to our community partners. What's the next step?
The next step is finding out what materials we need for like parks, cleaning them up, gloves, and like the tongue trash things. For pet shelters, maybe like dog and cat food toys. And then, for like skate parks, paint for cleaning up graffiti. And then, my group in particular, needing to build our food drive pantry stand, we're going to need lumber to build the structure. We're going to need tools. And most importantly, we're going to need someone who can build it.
Maybe we can talk later. All right. So, with that being said, once we have the items, what is it that we need to do next, Bristol?
Um, next, we needed to see how much of them items we need and how much they cost so that we knew what budget to ask for. And we have money, but.
Gabby, you want to tell us? So, these items aren't free, are they, guys? They do, they cost money. We got to develop a budget. But where's the money going to come from?
Um, we're making grants using a template. And we're giving them to our PTO and the Mount Vernon Teachers Union because they have supplied us with $500.
Absolutely. So, our students are actually writing mini-grants right now. So, they're taking that writing and they're integrating it again through these mini-grants that they're applying for.
I wouldn't be surprised if you wrote a grant to the board. They might have.
Maybe we could do that too. That's a great idea. All right, and.
Could I ask, have you thought about maybe partnering with the Career Center? Does he have building trades? Would maybe build it for you?
Well, we have talked about in my class, we did talk about maybe getting in touch with the Career Center and seeing if they could help us build.
So, you don't need me anymore?
We'll take any, we'll take all the help.
Are there any questions?
Yes, um, thank you, all of you. When you're in the STEM program and you're working on these items, do you write about them? Do you write a story or a plan that you're working on as part of the whole curriculum?
Well, we're kind of, so we're in groups and we kind of meet together every STEM time to see, to like meet up with our group. We are writing letters right now for the emails and stuff.
And we kind of discuss with them what we think that would help our community. And we have like cer, there's like three, three communities, no, three places our community that we thought need to work on. And we split into groups and we discussed about them, the communities.
So, it's helping not just your writing, but also your communication skills.
Yes, isn't it?
Great.
Yeah, I think what's really interesting with this is that based on those interests, we have groups of students that may not necessarily have typically worked together. And so, it's providing them the opportunity to collaborate with peers they may not otherwise collaborate with too.
I'm very impressed with your public speaking.
Great group. Anything else you want to hear? Yeah, so, right here, you can see, this is one of our groups that's actually researching the contact information for the nursing facilities. And so, it's my understanding that you guys have reached out to, what is it, Northern Star?
Uh, Brookdale.
Brookdale, okay. So, I was wrong in that area. But they, but they're doing research themselves too. So, they're building, you know, they're building their budgets in terms of their math skills. It's that application piece. They're writing grants. They're really writing, you know, these professional emails too. But when we look at that whole kind of portrait of a graduate, we're really getting them to think critically and creatively as well. And it's not going to be perfect. That's what's wonderful about this project. And we've explained that. There are going to be learning opportunities along the way. Nothing goes perfectly as planned. And that's a wonderful learning opportunity for all of us. And I think we found that even through the processes we've worked through as well. Now, in May, our students are going to be going out into the community and actually completing these projects. And we would love to provide a formal invite to our board members as well. If you'd like to join us, we'd love to have to. So, I'll be in contact with more details as well, if you're interested.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
We just wish you all the success.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave, do you have parents with you that you could introduce?
Yes.
Would you like to introduce them?
My mom is right there in the third row.
My mom and grandma in the back row and my brother. My parents are right there in the third row with my sister.
Great.
Thank you, guys, so much for your work.
I'll tell you, Gabby, Bristol, Keaton, great job.
Thank you.
You really did a good job. If you don't know by now, and it's not a secret anymore, Mr. Maury is in his second year and just doing amazing things at Twin Oak. And we've got a great staff there. And so, thank you, Ella, for your work. Now, we have a celebrity.
One more, while we're on Twin Oak, I had the pleasure of having Mr. Maury at preschool, coming in and observing some of his incoming kindergarten students. So, there's nothing better for him to be able to see them in their environment as he's laying out his class schedules. And so, I know, I'm sure your teachers appreciate that. I know we appreciate being able to be a part of that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for that as well, yes. Sorry, Ella, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Thank you.
We're pleased to welcome Ella, senior class president and also the 2023 Forum Queen. Here's some information about her, in a little bit. But Ella, thank you. Tell us what's going on at high school.
Very exciting. All right, so, our spring sports are starting up, as it is spring. So, we have our boys tennis team has begun practice as well as track and field, baseball, softball, and our boys volleyball team. So, the boys tennis team have their first home event. It's on March 25th, which is their Jacket Invitational. Track has their first meet on March 25th away at River View, but their first home event is April 11th. And then, varsity baseball has their first home game on March 28th versus Ashland. And varsity softball has their first home game, March 28th versus Ashland as well. And then, boys varsity volleyball had their first home game on March 10th, but their next home quad is March 25th at the Fieldhouse here. And last weekend, the wrestling team ended their season very strongly. And they had three state placers, Alex Taylor, Brock Blankenhorn, and Emma Reinhardt. And then, head coach Cory Fireball won Coach of the Year. So, that's really cool. And then, our robotics team had two teams in the recent state competition earlier this month. One team was ranked 19th and the other team was ranked 27 out of 96 total high school teams. So, that's pretty good. And then, both teams made it to the round of 16 elimination tournament and they had a successful season. The robotics team is also led by Mrs. Darcy Hahn. And then, our competition cheer team made it to state, the D2 state competition, and they were state runner-up. So, that's really cool. And then, for the wrestling, there was also a school record of 11 district qualifiers and two district alternates. So, a lot of record-breaking. And as Mr. Cedar said, this past weekend was MBHS's forum show. And we had over 1,000 attendees. And then, Steve Farmer was awarded Teacher of the Year. And then, all 25 performers were very outstanding. So, absolutely. And Tyler Davidson made it to state diving and placed 28. And recently, senior Ben Bridge was committed to Marshall to play golf. And senior Tyler Davidson committed to Cleveland State to be part of their diving team. Brooklyn Thayer and Avelli Williams both committed to Walsh for their track and field team. Jack Creggo committed to Otterbine for track. Kennedy Ansley committed to Otterbine for softball. And Hannah Summerfield committed to Tiffin University, placed to play soccer. So, it's all our recent commitments. And then, this week is our first week of the new quarter. So, seniors are getting in that graduation studio line. And student government also, we're adding our final touches for planning prom. So, that's for getting prizes and decorations. So, that's, I've enjoyed that a lot. And then, our prom is May 13th. And senior National Honor Society members are working hard to get their hours in by April 30th in order to get that corp. So, and then, 140 members of our band, choir, and orchestra are traveling to Florida this spring break. And each ensemble will perform at Universal Studios Orlando on Sunday, April 2nd. There will be a send-off concert at the theater on Wednesday, March 29th at 6:30 PM. And their musical is Cinderella, which is cool. And it's on April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And they have a Topson Pops Jazz Concert, which is following on the April 28th. And Ski Club Boots and Bindings, led by Mrs. Keaton, just finished a successful season of skiing and snowboarding at Snow Trails with a total of 70 participants. And then, two weeks ago, seniors were delivered their caps and gowns in preparation for graduation. And there are 11 days remaining to buy this school, this year's school year book at a reduced price.
That's wonderful.
Great job. Now, you moved our location of prom this year, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
Where is it at this year?
It's going to be at the Rusty River Bar in Utica, which we kind of lucked out. It's very gorgeous. So, I think soon, Mrs. McClure will take us to visit and see how we're going to plan the decorations and stuff. So, yeah, something a little fortunate. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're a nice gal, right? Thank you. I didn't see Mrs. Thompson and Mr. Lang. And there was no public participation, so.
We do have a number of additions to the agenda for this evening. And they're noted there in item B, a facility use request for St. Vincent and a couple of contract requests there for Mr. Mount and Mrs. Johnson. So, those are added to the sections of the agenda, as you'll see them. Under superintendent's report, I do have a district update. Really, it's a lot of what Ella shared. I should have had you just narrate. There's not a lot happened between our February meeting and our March meeting, but there's a lot of opportunities. And every time you start something like congratulations, you always worry you missed some folks along the way. But this is the most recent that we have. So, congratulations are in order for a lot of different groups, which Ella had mentioned. Their Mount Vernon Cheer Competition Squad, they were state runner-ups. And so, you know, to be second in the state is a pretty nice accomplishment. Congratulations to the ladies. Alex Taylor, as was mentioned, Alex is a freshman. And to be a freshman and to wrestle at the 215-pound weight class, where quite frankly, those look more like Greek bodybuilders at that level, and they're mostly upperclassmen and seniors, for him to place third as a freshman is quite a feat. And I think it's the first time we've had a third-place finisher in a good number of years. But we also had a couple other placers. Brock Blankenhorn was sixth place at 106 pounds. And then, Emma Reinhardt placed for the second time at the state competition. And she took seventh. So, congratulations to those folks on their state-level competition. We did have band, choir, and orchestra. All went to Granville for an OMEA competition. And among that entire group, we had 23 superior ratings. That's the highest you can get, 21 excellent ratings. So, really doing some amazing things in our fine arts programs as well. This weekend was the forum show. And I got to tell you, I've been able to attend for the last 10 years. I thought that this year had probably as much talent as I'd ever seen. We've always had great talent, but from beginning to end, it just was really, really top-notch. And oftentimes, I'll sit down with the program and I try to look towards our senior citizens luncheon, where I want to try to invite some folks back. And all of a sudden, I mean, I'm starting to check off a lot of folks, which I can't just recreate the forum show, but what an amazing group. So, this is the 2022 Mount Vernon High School Forum Court. Beautiful young ladies, lots of color there. And then, of course, we have someone pretty special. Ella was the Forum Queen. And that was awfully nice to see them kind of do their thing. You know, the forum show is really kind of a talent show, but it also brings in this kind of pomp and circumstance of, you know, beautiful dresses and gentlemen all dressed up, some choreography and dancing. And so, it was really kind of special to kind of blend that in. It is a talent piece, so show us your talent a little bit here. We had dancers and jumping higher than Mr. Hankins has ever jumped. We had some bands performances in the middle of that. We had cheerleaders joined us. We had baton twirling. We had a tough time getting a good picture of baton twirling because it was all done with black lights. And, you know, and so, it was a little challenging. We had some amazing singers. We had the senior chorus. Of course, I don't know who that is there, but they did a nice, they did some neat little skits in their work. We had some amazing musicians, from piano to a variety of instruments. The drum line came and joined us. And again, they did something very similar to the baton twirling. Boom, lights went out. They fancied up their drums and blew our eardrums out. Always kind of fun to have inside. So, that was really neat. Just a couple of quick updates. We do have a delayed start on Monday, the 27th. It kind of continues along the line. Just a two-hour delay to help us move towards completing our new reading courses, the Science of Reading. And believe it or not, spring break is right around the corner, two weeks away. And that'll be April 3rd through the 8th. Also coming up, right around April 20th is our senior citizens' spring luncheon. The administrators, we're beginning to put together our spring newsletter. That should be coming out right around the 1st of April. This will be posted in that as well. But it's a great opportunity for us to invite our senior citizens in and to share some of the exciting things that are going on. In the fall, we had it right here in this building and it made it very handy for in and out. We are moving it back over to the high school in the spring and primarily because the auditorium has been completely kind of redone. And some of these performances that I want to share with our senior citizens, they need the stage. And they need, you know, they need that ability. Ella mentioned that Cinderella is our musical coming up. Ironically, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, I think, is the Cinderella musical. So, we're even looking to have a small snippet of the Cinderella musical for our seniors on that day as well. We've been averaging about 250-plus. And again, it's, we just welcome our seniors. It's free to them. And they just give Jessica a call and she loves getting that information. So, those are some things that are going on in our district update. Just wanted to share with you. As we kind of move on down to board policies, I shared this in the board update. This is still under items for information. So, twice a year, we meet with our Neowa partners or our policymaker, and they share with us new updates and new policies. And they came to us, to Gary and I, in March. And we sat down and looked at all those policies. Interestingly enough, the month before, in February, we had a list of about six or seven policies that we needed to revise and update per the auditors in our conversations with them. And it takes two readings for us to have our policies updated. So, in this section right here, number two, this is the first reading. You can go down through and take a look at those and feel free to ask any questions you might have. It might be something so simple that it's just a couple small words. Like, when you look down here, if I change tobacco use in the administrative policy, I also change it in the professional policy. I change it in the classified staff policy. And so, it just kind of recycles itself. But what we are approving tonight are those items we put on February's board agenda. And they're these six items for your second reading tonight. Along with those, we have a number of home and community school participants in athletics, and we have one there for your approval. So, really, those two items for your approval.
Okay, I would entertain a motion then to approve those policies. Okay, I would entertain a motion then to approve those policies.
So moved.
Mr. Wardman, do I have a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Were there any questions about any of them? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Wardman, yes. Mr. Ward. Mr. Gola-Dai.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. And maybe before we continue, if I have you, those became for the student performance. If you would like to leave, you're welcome to do so. Thank you so much, thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay, too.
Well, now we should just move right on up as a cozy group, because.
We're not their audience, but.
Items of information, I pulled up some areas of interest.
Okay, we had, did you mention the home community school participation? Is that included with the policies?
Yes.
Did mention it. Good idea.
Okay, good. So we're down to curriculum?
Yep, down to your section.
All righty. I'm gonna go over most of these just very quickly, since there were so many that I thought were pretty interesting. On the first article, Maslin, Ohio, Jackson High School was one, they found one of the most popular electives for a FIS Ed was created by Dan Rodriguez in 2017. And he saw, just like I think we have seen, declining interest in P E classes and students increasing numbers applying for waivers. So he was very creative and sought certification as an official in football, basketball, and baseball. And then from his training, he developed a high school curriculum. He said it was a whole lot of work, a ton of time and effort. But he said it was really, it's been a good thing. Students have gained in appreciation for referees and officials and for how hard their job is. And students also like the $25 to $30 an hour that they can make to pay to work on the weekends. So I thought that was pretty creative. The second article is about Kingsmill, Ohio, local high school. And they also have a popular elective, and it's on employability. It's a course that teaches soft skills, practical skills, such as car maintenance and promoting career pathways and hands-on. It's a hands-on alternative to college, and the goal is to teach skills they can use regardless of the career path that they take. And then the third article was about Bay Village High School. And it was recognized for closing the gender gap in A P Computer Science course. And they were recognized by the C S A, which I assume is Computer Science Association. And they received the 2022 Female Diversity Award, received by only 209 high schools nationally and 25 high schools in Ohio. And since 2017, their female participation in these A P classes had increased by 39%, which is pretty significant. My only problem with the article was it didn't really give us a lot of help on how they did that, other than they said that high school counselors have helped grow the program by uniquely planning a pathway for each student. So I guess the high school counselors were pretty involved. The fourth article is about the founder of the free K-12 video lessons on Khan Academy. And Sal Khan discusses the decline in math due to the pandemic, according to the N E P data. And he believes that math education should be more organized around a principal, leading to new material, which of course makes sense. And he knows that when students are able to do personalized practice to address their unfinished learning, eighth grade is where the students see the biggest, most dramatic gains in math. And this makes sense because, you know, you have gaps in fourth grade, fifth, and they just accumulate and escalate. By the time you get to eighth grade is when it really hits kids, and they have trouble from that point on. So he said you need fluency in core skills, by which he means rote learning and memorization, such as, we all remember learning our times tables. And he said before you can do the higher-order thinking skills and problem-solving, you really need those basic foundational skills. So both are necessary, and he doesn't believe in getting into the math wars. But he says peer-to-peer and active learning are the way to go. He believes if you let kids work in their zones of proximal development, he doesn't explain what that means, but I'm assuming it means that you take them from their developmental level where they are at and move them forward. And you motivate them, then you can actually accelerate people on that pretty quickly. So that's an interesting article. The fifth article is about Omaha Public School Teachers and Students Digging Into the History of Omaha's Communities and the Metro Area. And they actually interviewed elders in the community to find out what used to be in the community, and then they created maps to show the difference then and now. And they're hoping that students have learned valuable lessons from interviewing the older generation and preserving their memories. And the hope is that they can use what they've learned to make their communities vibrant again sometime in the future. And then the sixth article is Career Activities in Elementary School. And they're suggesting that we keep the focus wide if you're going to be doing that. Don't silo students too early, don't narrow their career focus. In elementary school, it should be very broad, and they should be exposed to all kinds of opportunities. And all foundational skills are important, so that regardless of what pathway a student takes. And then the research article on sadness and hopelessness among teen girls was pretty depressing, no pun intended. It was using the 2021 data, showed an increase over the past 10 years from 2011 to 2021, of 36% to 57% of students saying this, this is teen girls. And that they, the article's saying that students need far more support to cope, hope, and thrive. And that the Center for Disease Control and Prevention has created What Works in Schools Prevention Program that supports schools by assisting with the implementation of quality health education, connecting them to needed services, making school environments safer and more supportive, with a strong focus on school connectedness. And I think we're trying to do that with our focus on social workers and our student health clinic and our center. And, you know, we've been very intentional in trying to connect our students. And I think parent engagement is also very important. So very depressing article, but maybe something we need to, you know, continue to focus on. Are there any questions?
It was just a lot of good information in that one. And I know that O H S A A, I don't know if they've piggybacked on what Dan, the curriculum that Dan has put together, Rodriguez. But I do know O H S A A has reached out to many high schools asking for that.
For ideas.
Right, and to do the appreciating course as part of a curriculum.
Because they need appreciators right now.
Absolutely, they do.
And it's a great way for kids to make extra money, too.
I think, I think it raises a bigger question, though, and that's a question of just fan decorum and the folks treated like they're life and death activities anymore. And officials are unfortunately just bantered and berated and.
And that's what he pointed out, that when the students take this course and observe, they begin to see it from a different perspective.
Maybe we should put some fans in those.
But it makes you wonder if the students would have the maturity, you know, to handle any kind of.
And that's the other thing, too, is, yeah, teaching them how to handle it.
They should be seniors that we.
I love the Khan Academy article, it was interesting just because it was a question and answer. So he asked some really interesting questions. Of course, he has a unique perspective on, you know, where he's come from. But I certainly saw a couple math teachers going. All vacation day. It was kind of interesting, so.
But it does make math go a lot faster if you know what your day is. A lot easier.
We have two items in this section for board approval tonight. First is a college credit plus agreement. We have to have an agreement with every college that we, or that our students would participate with. And so while we always think of the local colleges, and we have agreements with them, we broaden out. And in this particular instance, we're using Compass State Community College as well. So there's an agreement there. And then an overnight student trip, ski trip, it'll be next year. But Mrs. Keaton is always on time and ahead of time, and I gotta appreciate that. And so this is February of 2024, but we have so many students that participate there as well. So those two items for your approval.
I would entertain a motion to approve those two items.
So moved.
I'll say it.
Thank you, Mr. Wardman, were there any questions? And didn't Ella mention something about the ski trip?
Yes.
Seventy, seventy kids. Seventy who are currently involved, yeah.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Gola-Dai.
Yes.
Mr. Wardman, yes. Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried, thank you. And we'll turn it over to our treasurer. That's a nice number.
It is. I have shifted a little more of our funds into that realm. You won't see the freeze of that just yet, but obviously, want to make the most of the market where it's fairly high for the things we're allowed to invest in. So we'll take advantage of that while we can. We'll make sure we don't get in a situation where we're really gonna pull it out early. That kind of situation.
We're not investing in Silicon Valley Bank?
Your retirement funds.
Yeah.
I feel like I say this every month, this isn't boilerplate in that the first line is a, you can see several tax advances hit our account. So you see $8.7 million in that very first line there. The final settlement has actually hit the bank, but I don't have the paperwork yet. So I'm grateful to have all of that first half of the year taxes in place and the rest of it. You guys know that we get foundation payments twice a month from the state, and it's always reflected in that line up there. And if you have any questions about this, I'll be glad to do my best to answer them. But this is a pretty boilerplate report that you guys are used to getting. There's no questions on that. We do have two appropriation amendments. One of them is really good news because you'll see in 499, a safety grant amount there of $420,000 that we were awarded. That represents two different grants. One of them is 400, and the other one is 20. And my understanding in speaking with not only Mr. Schaefer but Mr. Cedar is they've already got that sort of mapped out in terms of what we're going to do with it. So you can probably speak to that better than I.
Well, the $400,000 was a, was a safety grant that was provided, it had to be very specific. And we wrote the grant in such a way that we needed to update, or quite frankly, put in new P A systems. There, some of those are so old, they come with internal clocks, they come with internal displays. And so from a safety standpoint, if you ever find yourself needing to kind of lock down or go into different safety modes, there would be a visual representation in the hallways, the P A system would be integrated. And so we, that's how we applied for it. And all eight buildings received that grant. That's what I was wondering.
Fantastic.
The other amendment you will see is, is for the principals' funds. This one never concerns the students because that's non-taxpayer money. They've done fundraisers and other things, so if they want to spend it, as long as they're spending it legal, it doesn't bother me. So those two items for your approval, and you let me know when you're ready for the reading of the donations. Go ahead and do that first. Okay, we have four donations there. We have an anonymous donation to Twin Oak Elementary, $100 to pay down outstanding student lunch debt. We greatly appreciate that. We have a donation from Mr. and Mrs. Dave Culbertson of coats, gloves, backpacks, again to Twin Oak Elementary School. I have a donation from New Life Church of miscellaneous school supplies, gloves, hats, pants, and backpacks to Dan Emmett Elementary School. Another donation from Mr. and Mrs. Dave Culbertson of coats and pants, also to Dan Emmett Elementary School. And we have a donation from Ambet's Commander Mike Dean, Sr., of a new American flag to Dan Emmett Elementary also. So we appreciate all of those donations. Thank you to all of those folks.
Thank you. And I would entertain a motion to approve those three items.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gola-Dai. Were there any questions? Thank you for mentioning how grateful we are for those donations.
Absolutely. Very generous.
We're giving community, don't we?
I think that has it very well to that twin oak presentation. I know, just giving back to the people that's this community. We're very blessed.
And would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ward, yes. Mr. Gola-Dai.
Yes.
Mr. Wardman, yes. Mrs. Getzmann.
Yes.
Dr. Bennett.
Yes, motion carried, thank you. And we have our legislative liaison report.
I'm not going to go to all of those leaks, so don't worry. But I wanted to focus just on the HB 12 and SB 1. They are basically mirror images, but there's several concerns with these bills. First is the reformation of property and income taxes. And the Legislative Service Commission provided a fiscal analysis. And the loss in revenue for the state and local communities could be in the billions of dollars, is what their concern is. And also, of course, it would have a, be a major hit on our school funding. And then also, interestingly enough, this could work in reverse and cause an increase in property taxes for some people. So tomorrow, unfortunately, I cannot go to the legislature to tell them my concerns personally. But there are some people that are going to go, I think, and tell them what, you know, what we think about it, I hope. And then HB 3 authorizes a housing tax credit. HB 4 relates to business and financial institutions and the boycotting of those. HB 6 is called the Save Women's Sports Act. HB 8 relates to parental bill of rights. HB 9 establishes the Grow Your Own Teacher Program. It would be nice if we could just take a sprinkling can and do that. HB 10 continues phasing in the school financing system. And there's so many bills that have been introduced that I did not want to go through all of them. But it is a slew, so peruse at your pleasure. Is there anything that you'd like me to tell it, in an email at least, to the legislature? Found anything?
Well, I keep, Gary and I are keeping pretty close tabs on some of those. HB 1, you know, kind of dealing with the tax rollback and those kind of things. I think House Bill 920 is going to impact that. I don't see that going anywhere at this point, because it does a counter offense to what you had mentioned. I'm really closely watching Senate Bill 11, and that has to do with the voucher piece.
Yes, backpack, yes.
They've done some legislative work on that, and they've come out pretty clearly that if the voucher system goes entirely statewide over two-year biennium, it'll be $1.1 billion. And those are for folks who have never gotten any funding ever before. And so I doubt they're going to take the biennial budget in education and throw on another $1.1 billion.
Where does it come from?
And we know that's not going to take place, so that pie that we have normally gotten is probably going to be sliced out. And so I think that's one to kind of watch, because I think that's a real, it's one that has certainly gained some impetus and steam under the auspice of school choice. And there's parts of me that it's all about. I understand school choice, I can appreciate it. But we all have to play in the same sandbox, the same rules, and the same this and that. So keep your eye on that one, because some of the financials that are coming out of that are really interesting.
Yes. Thank you for adding that.
We have a number of items for board approval in this Business Services section. Most of them are facility use requests. And I won't go through and read every one of them, but they're really the use of the facilities, predominantly in times when we have people in the buildings. I will make a couple of notes, and every once in a while, we do get some of these that are kind of at the back end. I think I might have a remedy for that that we'll talk about at some point in time, where I can approve those retroactively, and then we can go back and pass them. But Item E, there was a basketball tournament here early March, where over 100 schools came to Mount Vernon from across the United States. It was part of the Christian Schools Athletic Association in conjunction with M V N U. But M V N U only has so many courts. And then, of course, we have the Fieldhouse now. And together, we brought in over 100 schools. And so they played for three days, they stayed in our hotels, they ate in our restaurants. And so just a neat opportunity for us to showcase Mount Vernon. And then, of course, you can see the other facility use requests. We do have an E S E service agreement that we do every year with St. Vincent and Seventh Day Adventist. And then we have an approval for a cooperative advertising with Meta for the purchase of two school buses. So those three items for your approval tonight.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the services. Items as read.
I'll second.
Were there any questions? Gary, now would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mr. Gola-Dai?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Yes, motion carried, thank you.
Mrs. Getzmann's term has officially ended as the Ohio OHSAA update. And so no, no report there at the moment, right?
Other than just piggybacking on what you had said earlier about efficiency.
Whatever we hear from OSBA even in some ways. So other than that, we don't have anything in this section for board approval tonight.
Personnel and certified licensed staff.
We have one item for information. It's a job share between two teachers. And almost yearly, we have teachers who, you know, for various reasons, want to job share 50/50 kind of a thing. These are two middle school teachers, and they've done it before. And, you know, we'd love to have them here all the time, but we understand that there are family things that come up, and so they're going to job share next year. Items for board approval tonight are kind of the traditional employment kind of items. You see the retirement of Pete Lyons there. We've got a couple resignations. Two substitute teacher contracts, a supplemental contract. Item F is our audio media specialist, which we talked about last month. You're seeing a whole bunch of chaperones again for the Disney trip that's coming up. And we've had all those folks FBI and VCI background checked. And then we have finally a pupil activity permit for lay coach, for freshman softball. Just as a note there, Cody is still in the process of finishing his pupil activity permit, so he's not working with us yet. And we'll make sure that he has that before he can start. Those items for your approval.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion and to approve those items, Ezra.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gola-Dai, you have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann. Were there any questions?
No questions, but I had sent a congratulations note to, email to Mr. Lyons, and he sent me a picture of his grandson. And that's what he was going to do, spend a lot of time.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Gola-Dai?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried, thank you. And classified staff.
The classified staff, we have one item for information, just a custodial change. As we've kind of continued to shift and navigate folks in the districts, we have a number of items for board approval tonight. You'll see some pre-appointments, new hires there. You see some substitute employment, and we do have one retirement. Margaret DeVillers is going to retire after many years at the high school. So we'll get a chance to recognize her in our May Board Meeting, which will be out at Twin Oak. But those items for your approval tonight.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the classified staff items, Ezra.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gola-Dai. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Gola-Dai?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann? Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried, thank you. Board members have comments. Mrs. Getzmann?
Well, I will start by saying I really enjoyed Twin Oak's presentation tonight. It's nice to have kids back amongst edible needs, and that's exciting. And again, I just want to say congratulations to Dr. Bennett on her OSBA Star Leadership Award. You serve us well, and you always extend and make sure we're at the top of our knowledge level when it comes to state policies and things that award us through the High State School Board Association. So thank you for your service.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, thank you. This would go next. Thank you to those who are still here. And to those who may be watching at home, we appreciate it very much. When I went to the forum show Saturday, sometimes seeing children up there and performing with so much poise, it brings tears to my eyes. And I know that everything that the teachers do and our administration does is to help these kids succeed in whatever they want to do. And I especially enjoy when they announce what the kids are going to be doing when they graduate. Dental hygienist, and one is going to be a firefighter. And then it's just remarkable. And we've come a long way, and that's thanks to the parents and the community and to our administration. And I give credit to the children and their families for what they do. So congratulations to everybody. And I told one of the cheerleaders, it's no wonder they do so well at state because they were really awesome.
Thank you.
I too would like to thank and recognize the folks from Twin Oak. It goes to service learning. It's really where, it's really an opportunity where all the subject matter and stuff comes together and you combine it with the communications and the writing skills for the grants. And, you know, it makes learning relevant at that point. It becomes real memorable for these kids. So I want to thank the leaders within that building for pulling that together. I think it's a, it's a great deal for our, for our community, actually. So thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not.
Mr. Workman? Last but not least.
You know, every, every month I'm impressed, and it's great, like you said, to have the students back in presenting. And it's just so impressive. I mean, when you hear them talk and they're in fifth grade. I mean, well, one, there's a lot of memorization that they had to do, and they did it very well, so I was really impressed with that. But congratulations to students and athletes. So many thank yous, or congratulations that go out to that. Such a wonderful time there. And also, last but not least, congratulations, Dr. Bennett, on your Star Award. So well deserved, thank you.
Mr. Cedar?
I also am incredibly humbled when I see the kids. And I think there's a, there was a recognition when Wigan Street shared. And just the power that comes from students presenting. And so now all of a sudden, I've got principals going, I want to try to bring our students and get them more engaged. And I think that makes it much more authentic and good for us. So congratulations to all those groups. We will have a special board work session on the 30th of March, and so we'll get that information out. I do have just a really short executive session on appointment issue. And otherwise, another good board meeting, thank you.
And I would like to also say how proud I am of our kids and how it just really brightens up on me and, you know, to hear from them.
To see the parents just smiling.
To recognize them because we know the parents have a big part in all of this. Their support that gets them here and so forth. And also, just the energy field house, you know, I'm just so amazed whenever we go walk there, all the things that are going on and what a wonderful facility it is and how grateful I am for our community. We do really have a wonderful community, so giving and just really cares about our students. And so I'm very grateful to be a part of this school and not running from it. Thanks to all, to all of the community members for their support. We will entertain a motion and to the legislative session. And you did say briefly, right?
Just briefly.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gola-Dai. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gola-Dai. You'll call the roll, please?
Mr. Gola-Dai?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.